Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your city council meeting. My name is Paul Blackburn. I'm the mayor. I'm going to call us to order for March tenth, twenty twenty five. First thing we need to do is silence our cell phones. Next thing we're going to do is a land acknowledgement. As we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nez Perce, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who steward this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abigail, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, we do not.
The first item is business from the audience. Mike Kettler, please come up. Nope, just here. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Uh, here we go. Presentations, no. Public hearings. I probably have a script. Do I have a script? Consolidated fee schedule, standby, executive session. Fireworks, yes. Okay, here we go. I call to order a public hearing for ordinance number twenty ninety, an ordinance amending section nine dot three six of the Hood River Municipal Code relating to the use of consumer fireworks in the city. Let me begin with the description of tonight's hearing. First, staff will provide an overview of the amendment. Then we will take public testimony, and finally, we will close the hearing, deliberate, and render a decision on the proposed ordinance. Final adoption may occur in the regular portion of today's meeting. That's the procedural introduction. If anyone has any questions about the process as we're going through it, please feel free to raise your hand and ask them during the testimony. A quorum is the count of the council is present. Do any counselors have any conflicts of interest to disclose in this matter? Seeing none, we will proceed from the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time and energy on this topic. As you know, in the last four, five years, we've declared a, um, an emergency and banned fireworks, uh, three times. And so in conversations with a couple of you, and I think at a previous council meeting, you asked if we could have a conversation. So two weeks ago, or a month ago, uh, February tenth, you had a work session in which you reviewed the options and made two recommendations or directed staff to come back with a updated ordinance that addressed two things. One was, um, Councilor Cavallari noticed that ours, our code did not match state law regarding the dates of sale. So that has been corrected. I think it was one day off. I think we allowed till July seventh, and I think state law was July sixth. So that has been addressed.
Excellent.
Uh, and then the second one more significant was, uh, you looked at different options for the use of fireworks. Uh, directed staff to prepare ordinance that would allow them only on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So we've picked hours, I think, six to six P M. to one A M. So coming back to you with that language and the city attorney, Dan Kirns is, uh, also available, uh, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Uh, do any counselors have questions of staff before we take testimony? Amanda.
I was just hoping that, um, maybe Dan could speak to, because for me, it's a little weird having the incongruency of the selling of fireworks in June and shooting them off in, uh, December. So if we could really remind me why we can't change the sale date or, I guess, address that a little bit.
Mm hmm. Or what it would take to do that. Yeah.
Dan. Um, you could. It's, it's a policy decision, uh, for you. Just picking these dates, um, is a policy decision. But but I got to tell you, this debate I've seen, uh, played over and over again in virtually all of the cities I represent as general counsel. And, um, also I've seen it in City Portland where I live. And, um, if you want to curtail the use of fireworks, it's really hard to do it if you don't similarly curtail their sales. And, you know, Portland struggled with that for years. And finally, they said, look, we, it doesn't do any good to prohibit fireworks if people just go down to Fred Meyer and buy them. Um, or if they've got them stockpiled from other places and, you know, they, they can fire, shoot them off on New Year's, but they can't on Fourth of July. So these dates matter, and it kind of comes down to how does enforcement work? And so I would talk to, you know, uh, the police chief, but also it's, you know, they're your constituents and what's going to work best for you. Um, in terms of enforcement, it is kind of unreasonable where people can, you know, go down to Fred Meyer and buy them and, and can't shoot them off, or they have them from previous, you know, uh, times in there for sale and they can't shoot them off. So that's what Portland finally did, and it's sort of working now that they have prohibited sales and use of fireworks. Another battle I've seen play out is often in some of the smaller cities, some of the, uh, uh, your nonprofits like, um, Lions Club. They sell fireworks and it's a big, uh, money, a revenue generator for them. And so it becomes again a political question. But these are some of the political issues that you have to struggle with.
So do we have, like, people who fundraise for fireworks in Hood River? And if we don't, it doesn't seem like an issue, but if we do, like, or if we decide we want to change, we do that. And then, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to anybody else. It just seems weird to have them for sale when you can't shoot them off.
Abigail.
I, perhaps, uh, I think the answer you got from the city attorney is if you wish to, uh, ban the sale, that can certainly be done. I know the city of Milwaukee recently did that. Um, they're the one that I know most recent. Um, but maybe I'll save additional comments to when you get to the discussion part, because we're still in the staff report.
Sure.
Uh, hi, Dan. Uh, previously, we had discussed the banning of sale. You advised probably not a good idea to do that legally speaking. Um, that it was problematic to, it was easier to ban the use and not so much the sale. Is that incorrect, the way I understand it?
No, you can do it. It's legally possible to do that. You'll have to work with your retailers, though. Um, if you ban the use, you're just dealing with, you know, people on the street. So it's, it's a little more involved to ban the sale. You got to work, coordinate with your retailers. And you might get pushback. I kind of doubt it, but you might. Um, but you can do that. It's, it, you, it takes more work to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen it, Dan, where we just send sort of a friendly message to Walmart or whatever and say, look, it's a lot of legal work for us to ban the sale, but it's not allowed to use them. We're changing that rule. So you guys might want to, like, stock a lot less. Like, I don't know, like, it's not our, it's not our fault or whatever. Like, we don't owe them that, but it just seems like a friendly collaborative thing. Has anyone done that?
I don't know. You might, you might, uh, you know, you'd have to call Jeff Bezos too and suggest that he curtail sales over Amazon, but it, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that that would work with, you know, a big multinational retail outlet.
I guess I was might imagining walking down to Wasco Street, but who knows?
I mean, local small retailers, uh, might take that to heart. The larger ones will say, you know, it's not my decision. It's, you know, headquarters, uh, in Oakland, California follows the law, so if the law allows it, we're going to sell it.
Good. Thanks. Other comments, questions? Jen, has anyone signed up to speak? Are the two gentlemen in the front row looking to speak on fireworks? No? Okay. It appears we have no comment on this. Uh, I will now close the public hearing and open council deliberation. Ultimately, we have a motion. Anna.
I, uh, have the same recollection as, as not to be subpoenaed about that. I remember us hearing that it would be difficult to, to, uh, prohibit the sale because the sale was actually licensed to sell, um, kind of like restriction of the street environment or something. And so, so that was why it was going to be challenging to prohibit sales. And we were advised just to prohibit use. But this is just consumer. And I don't, I don't know of any local organizations that are, that sell, um, fireworks for fundraising. There is, uh, the Lions Club here does collect donations to fund their big commercial, um, display that they do. But that would, that this ordinance doesn't affect that at all, because this is just consumer personal use fireworks. So, um,
I can speak to the, um, to the sales in towns. I'm understanding from the city reporter that, uh, last year, there were two groups that, uh, got, um, temporary sale permits for sale for fireworks. Uh, I think one was Alliance Club, and I'm looking to the city recorder to correct me if I'm wrong. One was Alliance Club that sold consumer fireworks. Uh, the other is a company from Portland that gets the permit, but then I think they, uh, I think they partner with a nonprofit. Most recently, it was the Cheerleading Club. So
Which, I'm sorry.
The cheerleading.
Cheerleading.
That's my understanding from last year. So I don't know if any of those groups would be interested this year. And then, of course, I believe, um, Walmart, maybe some of our other retailers might sell them. But I know about those two permits that were applied for last year.
And it's an annual permit application?
That's right.
So, I mean, we're sort of the, the friendly reminder thing, like, ye- yes, we see that you are applying for this permit. Just so you know, the rules changed this year.
Yeah.
So anything you sell is not going to be permitted till, till, until New Year's.
Right, or not, or outside city limits.
They can just sell in between New Years.
Well, except that the state law is only July, June twenty third to July sixth.
The state will require stockpiling. I would like to add that I think also in the friendly Graham idea that just staff to staff, if you could just let the county know that we're doing this.
Oh, I've already informed them.
Because ideally we'd be in parallel, but I don't want to, like, I'm not the boss of them.
Yep, I have shared this information with the county administrator, but at once you, if you take an action tonight or whatever you decide, I will let her know.
Other questions or comments? So.
Um, if, if we could ban outright the sale and use, I would be completely in favor of that. I think being under red flag warning every year is unfortunate that that's the timing of Independence Day, but it's, it's a huge safety concern for our community. Um, I do realize the sale is not of massive fireworks, but we have a pretty well attended display, uh, down by the waterfront. Um, and I urge people to donate to that as opposed to buying something that, you know, we have dry grass everywhere and a sparkler can set off a fire. So, um, I, I don't like the reality that we're living in, but we are. So I'll just say that I'm in favor of banning all of it.
And what would it take to get us there, Abigail? Significant change in the language that we've prepared or?
I think they would just direct staff and I would look to the city attorney to update the language. Uh, and then we would do the same thing we did, which was we have to post it at least eight days in advance, uh, and then we would hold a public hearing at your next meeting. I think because we have the contact information for the folks who have permitted in the past or have gotten permits in the past, I'd probably let them know as well that you're having that conversation.
Right. So I guess I'd like to know a little more. How many people agree with this direction? Would like to see, yeah, so we all want that.
Okay.
No, excuse me, enough of us, or at least, at least four of us want that. Thank you, Ben. Fair enough.
Okay, with that, then.
No, I'll just say what I kind of mentioned last time. I know that I'm in the best part of here, but, uh, like I said, I have a hard time philosophically, uh, having people tell them that they cannot celebrate Independence Day in a traditional manner that has been going on for a long time. Totally understand and respect the, uh, concerns about that, but it seemed to me like there was a decent system in place for managing some of these public safety concerns. And also we had testimony from the, uh, police chief and fire chief who suggested that this, uh, ordinance would really not do a whole lot to curtail fireworks use. So, um, yeah, that's my personal opinion. Not a hill necessarily willing to die on so much, uh, but that's how I feel about it.
Yep. So to circle back a little bit, if, if we, uh, make this ordinance stronger, I still saw a majority indicating they would vote for no, no, no bang and no sale. Is that that what folks are, I don't want to waste staff's time and split that out. So, okay with that? All right.
Great. I'll check in with the city attorney tomorrow. We'll update the language, get it reposted, and hope to have it at your next meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so just to be clear, we, we, we considered having a motion tonight. We're not having a motion. We're changing the ordinance and bringing it back, right? Great, thanks.
Uh, next we have a public hearing on the fee schedule. I will read the other script. I call to order a public hearing relating to modification of the consolidated fee schedule for the city of Hood River. A quorum of the council is present. I will ask all counselors to disclose any conflicts of interest in this matter. Anybody with a conflict, they would like to declare? Would anyone in the audience like to question any counselor on any disclosure or otherwise challenge the participation of any member of council? Uh, for audience members watching on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature in the webinar if you wish to testify. If you are listening by phone, please use the star nine to raise your hand, the star six to toggle mute and unmute. Anybody indicating interest in that way, Chen? In tonight's hearing, we will use the following order of presentation. First, we'll hear from staff. Then we will hear from anyone wanting to speak on the matter. After everyone interested in this matter has had a chance to testify, we will close the record, deliberate, and render a decision. Staff report, please.
Great. Uh, and commander of the council, um, so, uh, the consolidated fee schedule is sort of an unofficial kickoff of the budget process. Um, the city of Hood River provides a full range of municipal services to the community, um, for which, uh, it collects fee revenue. Um, the consolidated schedule aggregates all these fees and charges, uh, and is adopted by city council by resolution for the city service, uh, for the performance of these city services. Um, each department has reviewed their changes for the services on the consolidated fee schedule and has requested revisions as appropriate for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. Um, the consolidated fee schedule also includes building fees, which are additionally reviewed by the Oregon Building Codes Division. Um, the schedule that's in front of you notably excludes the system development charges. Uh, we are undergoing a separate comprehensive review. Those will be, uh, brought back to council, um, for that adoption. Um, uh, the ma- the majority of the fees are subject to an inflation adjustment. Um, so incrementally increasing fees in alignment with an appropriate inflation index, uh, lessens the need for larger periodic fewer revisions and is consistent with the budget resolution twenty twenty zero seven adopted by city council. Uh, city's general fees are aligned to the Western State's Consumer Price Index. That increased two point five percent in twenty twenty four, uh, after a three point six percent increase in the previous year. Certain building and planning fees are linked to the engineering new record construction cost index, uh, that increased one point six percent in twenty twenty four, and that followed a two point seven percent increase in previous year. Um, certain fees that have been increased in excess of the inflation index or that may appear on the schedule, uh, for the first time are as follows. Um, section one administrative charges, uh, these are updated to reflect charges that are actually incurred by the city of Hood River by third-party payment processors. Um, a new return fee has been added to reflect actual costs that are incurred by the city. Uh, section two parking, uh, parking fees and charges represent about seven and a half percent of general fund revenue. Uh, so it's managed, um, it is managed based on the twenty nineteen parking study, uh, which was adopted by city council through resolution twenty twenty oh one. That incorporated the eighty-five percent rule, which is an operating pin, a principle and parking industry standard. Uh, under this standard, more aggressive parking management strategies are called for when occupancy rates routinely reach eighty-five percent during peak times. Um, notably for the city, uh, there are the lots at Cascade Front and State Street that remain sold out. Uh, so the city had started in twenty twenty a policy to increase those rates five dollars, uh, until such time as availability becomes, uh, in those lots.
Five dollars per month.
Five dollars per month. So the fees go from sixty dollars. Five dollars per month. So the fees go from sixty dollars to sixty five dollars under the new schedule. Columbia Lot, which is not sold out. Currently sixty five open spaces remains unchanged at twenty five dollars per month. Last, last year in the fiscal, in the consolidated fee schedule, there were increases to hourly parking. Failure to pay overtime parking limits and then non-payment of violation penalties. Those have not been changed in some time and were adopted last year. This fee schedule remains unchanged. Those, those fees remain unchanged. One of the larger changes is the parking in lieu fee. So resolution twenty eighteen revised the parking in lieu fee to three thousand dollars per space. For new residential and commercial development in the central business district, waterfront business district and the Heights Business District. Since that time, it has been adjusted only for changes in CPI. The current fee schedule proposes a twenty percent increase in the parking in lieu fee to four thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. The incremental fee reflects a more equitable balance of cost to the city of allowing developer to pay a set fee per parking space in lieu of construction. And still significantly offsets the cost of development of some or all the parking spaces required by zoning regulations. It should also be noted that funds collected under the assessed in lieu fee are deposited into a dedicated fund. To operate, maintain and expand the parking system of the City of Hood River. So just to be clear, that parking in lieu fee does not go to the general fund. Right? It goes to a separate fund that is, that is directed to offset parking costs. Sections, section three, there is a change, minor, minor change on the fee schedule. The mileage was erroneously indicated as mileage reimbursement for fire was erroneously indicated as twenty eight dollars. That actually should have been twenty nine dollars and seventy three cents. That mileage increase reflects the maximum allowable Medicare reimbursement rate. Again, it was a typo on the schedule. So as an exhibit, the resolution that's been, that's been changed. So just please be aware. Planning fees are in section six of the schedule. Planning fees have not been reevaluated by the department in approximately ten years. Based on a twenty twenty five average survey for Northwest Oregon, which excluded Portland and Central Oregon. Proposed plan fee, planning fee schedule makes certain fee adjustments that are in excess of CPI. And are meant to align the department fees to be more consistent with regional averages. In particular, planning fees for final plat approvals, subdivision approvals, site plan review, partitions, variances and zoning changes. Have all been increased, in some cases meaningfully to levels more reflective of the work and administrative costs required and more comparable to regional fees. Twenty twenty five, twenty six fee schedule also establishes annexation fees on a per acre basis, subject to a minimum charge. So the change in this schedule effectively provides a flat fee for smaller annexations, but adds a per acre charge. Reflecting the complexity of annexation process for larger parcels. Section seven is the building fee schedule. So as background, the building fund is a restricted fund separate from the general fund and uses revenues generated through the building fees. For, to fund, building fund operations. The twenty twenty five, twenty six consolidated fee schedule continues to process the categorical update of the city building fees that started in the previous fiscal year. These revised building fees in this schedule are informed by the jurisdictions of Wasco County and Hood River County. And the changes include the implementation of a twenty percent fee increase in mechanical and structural permits. Residential application permit fee of twenty percent and a prescriptive solar fee increase of thirty eight percent. Hourly fees are adjusted ten percent to cover the cost of county inspection costs as well as administration. Additionally, the schedule introduces a technology fee of three percent, which is meant to offset credit card charges. It should be noted that the council approval of the building fees is not the final step in this process. These building fees will also go through a state process, which includes a state hearing. An opportunity for comments and a repeal based on requests. Section nine, construction right away. No street cut and street cut permit fees have been increased to better reflect the work and hours involved with those permit issuances. Section ten, utility fees. Utility fees again are a significant source of revenue to the restricted funds. The fees in the current fiscal year schedule reflect the final year of the city's five year utility rate plan. So the, the rates reflected in this consolidated fee schedule are prescribed in that two thousand nineteen rate study. Which establishes the fees and the rate of increases. Bulk water sales. Those were raised significantly during the previous. Individual trucks coming through dropped significantly. So the current fee is readjusted to better align the cost with other bulk water sellers in the area. And additionally, there was a ten thousand dollar, I'm sorry, ten thousand gallon threshold, which has been removed for ease of implementation. Wastewater Treatment Plant, there is the introduction of a waste hauler permit fee of a hundred dollars to account for staff time associated with issuing these annual permits. And additionally, a commercial slug, sludge hauling and septicage, again, both commercial charges. Have been updated to better reflect processing costs as well as system impacts. Introduced in this fee schedule is a utility property damage fee schedule. These are utility property damage fines and staff hourly rates as may be required to repair damaged property. And then finally, section thirteen on the use of city property. It adds public work, equipment and rental rates, fuel surcharges, waste disposal rates. And associated personnel costs associated with these services and equipment as in addition to the schedule.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Do you, do you know generally what the balance is regarding what we've collected for parking lieu?
So actually, it's probably, it would be in the, it's in the fund.
Sorry, the fund balance or the annual intake?
Either would be useful. I'm just trying to understand how significant it is currently.
How significant? The, the amount that we've collected? So the, the balance, I, I don't have the balance right up. It, it accumulated balance from. Two thousand six on. So I think one of the issues that we saw initially. When the fee in lieu was established. It was one thousand dollars per space and we're not seeing anyone take us up on it. As Chris mentioned, the, the Rick Williams parking study reevaluated that. We came back with a revision to. It was three thousand dollars, a small amount that reflected the little amount that was returned on it, but we kept keeping it. Since that time, we've seen a huge uptake and percentage wise of people actually taking advantage of it and. Especially in hospitality, your, your three hotel conversions downtown have all taken advantage of that. And so the funds have gone up. I don't have the number out of my head, but what the balance is.
I guess what Chris is looking at, has that been useful for maintaining the parking system and, you know. We obviously maintain the parking system and offsetting, let's say, the sixty nine rooms or so that are built in the hotel on the corner here. Is that getting us closer to. Improving a lot, getting a parking structure, you know, it's.
So the fund balance, yeah, the fund balance is eighty thousand dollars currently.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so I mean, so I, I think that originally, and again, just in, in the research that I've read as far as the, the minutes. The parking study had recommended that the fee in lieu be a, be a larger percentage of what either surface or. Structured parking would cost develop. As Dustin mentioned, that fee somewhere around twenty grand was, you know, a space. At the time though, there was concern that making the parking in lieu that high would curtail downtown development. And so the, the city council elected the three thousand dollar parking in lieu. Fee just sort of based on, on internal discussions or whether, I don't think there was any sort of math behind it. So the concern is, is that, that it's. It's, it's a little too, it's a little too inexpensive as far as just sort of equating what, you know, what a fee is. Although if, you know, sort of going to, to a, again, going back to the parking study, that would be too restrictive. So the idea is to sort of make some sort of meaningful increase, so as to build, build the revenue in that, in that parking in lieu fee.
And, and I, I suppose, you know, it doesn't seem like that much of an increase, but it's an increase nonetheless. Like what, what? What will it help achieve in terms of the parking system?
I mean, honestly, at the, at the end of the day, I think that the, the city has not yet looked at sort of just general improvements of either striping or whatnot. I mean, that, the parking in lieu fee could be used to that. I mean, right now, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, right? But. There has been some money that has been set aside in, I believe, the downtown U R A for a, a parking garage study. I think that this fund was additionally supposed to contribute to that. You know, I don't, I don't. I don't think anyone believes that that's feasible at the moment, right? So, so this, so these funds have sort of been on, currently are sort of unassigned.
Okay, thanks.
I just have a very quick clarification question for you, Chris. Section eight building fees where you said that, that this particular consolidation to be scheduled. Can use the process of a category of building fees started in previous fiscal years. Is that tied to Dustin's project code update? Or is that very different? You mentioned earlier that it's tied to like states that.
Yes, so it's, it's. Again, jumping home court, but last year was the first year the building codes actually existed in the, in the fee schedule. It was, it was separately handled through the state and then just posted on the website, sort of in the building code section. So. We had presented it to City Council for the first time last year as part of the consolidated fee schedule. And as, and as part of that, many of the fees were brought up to either be commensurate with county or reflect sort of county costs. The county, both Wasco and Hood River County are revising their fees this year. And so in concert with that, the building department is continuing to update these fees.
I don't know, this really isn't a question for Chris, but just more of a comment. I mean, the Columbia Lot, sixty five spaces. Does that include like the area that, that, you know, the farmer's market is as well? Or is that just that one side?
I believe that's a whole lot.
We're not selling anything in that lot ever. It's just kind of baffling.
I was, I was, so in, in reviewing this report, I think vacancy last year was like. Was forty spaces. So it actually, so vacancies actually increased.
At twenty five bucks.
At twenty five bucks.
Twenty five bucks, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's kind of surprising, isn't it?
I don't know what to do with that information, but the others are sold out and that, that one is, is way under capacity.
And they're, and they're literally kitty corner adjacent.
Yeah, I mean. It's not, it's not like a longer walk and plus, you know.
Funny behavioral economics situation.
Sure. And as we talk about, you know, other areas of parking that are. Being reduced possibly because of the eighty five percent rule or putting in meters here or there. I mean. That's one of the areas I think is designed for employee parking at a reasonable, quote unquote, twenty five dollars a month rate. So it's just. What's going on there? You know, is. Yeah, I think we'll have to consider that in some way or shape or form, but not for today.
I was up in Odell today at a business that relocated from Fort Brinn and he said it's four and a half miles further, but you know. Feels further.
Any other questions for staff? Now we will hear from anyone wanting to speak on this matter, which I. Think there's no one. You guys aren't here for this either. Okay, good. We will close the record, deliberate and render a decision. Anybody want us to kick it off?
Just a question first. Do we have to make any change to the motion at all for that? Correction that Chris mentioned or was that already? No, okay.
So the resolution has as an exhibit the fee schedule. So I've corrected the typo on the, on the exhibits, the fee schedule. So in passing the resolution. It, it will be with the corrected fee schedule.
Great, thank you.
I move that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, adopting the consolidated schedule of fees, rates. And charges for the two thousand twenty five dash twenty six fiscal year.
Moved by Ben.
I'll second.
Second by Anna. Discussion. Grant.
Just a quick point. This isn't really. Not necessarily super relevant. Generally, knowing a little bit about development and whatnot and building things, a lot of fee schedules. Tacking fees along with CPI and whatnot, a lot of these things trace lagging indicators. And so a lot of the fees and things we calculate are based off of things that have happened in the past as opposed to. Current conditions or things looking forecasting in the future. So the, the curves, when looking at growth rates or potential impacts don't match up in terms of the future. I don't know if there's exactly a way to. To capture that or address that really well, but that, that's a, that's a bigger question. That's not necessarily a question we can answer right now or in this motion.
Thank you, Grant.
Yep.
Other questions or discussion? In that case, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have one O L C C permit, but Counselor Rivera is not here, so I'm gonna. Soldier ahead and see if we can't do it together. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Grant.
Second.
Second by Ben. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Action items, May Street Elevated Sidewalk, Adam.
All right. Good evening, mayor and councilors. You will find on page sixty seven of your packet. The cover memo and supporting documents for the May Street Elevated Sidewalk and next steps. I know some of you have been involved with this project from. Twenty nineteen and some of you are new to the project. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a, a brief background and some highlights of the project. So. Design of this project began back in twenty nineteen. The purpose of the project is to relocate the elevated sidewalk from May Street to Cates Lane on the north side of May Street. And the reason for the replacement is due to deteriorating concrete columns that are, that are currently holding up the elevated sidewalk. In twenty nineteen, the city entered into a local agency agreement with ODOT. For the design and construction for replacement of the May Street Elevated Sidewalk after the project was selected. Under the multimodal transportation enhancement program to receive federal funding. Through a, through the design process and because of topographic challenges of the location of the sidewalk. There were three options considered to hold up the sidewalk. The first being a concrete retaining wall with gravel. The second being a concrete retaining wall with a lightweight backfill. And the third being a soldier pile with lightweight backfill. And based on the design team's evaluation criteria through a rating system, it was determined that the best option was the soldier pile wall. With the lightweight backfill. There are three properties that are impacted by this project and all three properties. The city has been working with and have given temporary construction easements for the property. And ODOT put this project out to bid early February of twenty twenty five. And received five bids with the low bid coming in at one million six hundred and sixty seven thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty nine cents from. Stellar J Corporation. And what staff is looking for tonight is council's approval of an advanced deposit of. One million seven hundred ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and fifty six cents to ODOT. Does anyone have any?
I might have done the. Listening on the math wrong, but it sounds like we're writing a check for more than.
Yeah, there is a, there's contingency money that's involved. So. The engineering and contingencies are seven hundred and three thousand, sixty dollars and seventeen cents. And then there was federal money that was already obligated to this project for seven hundred and thirty five thousand, eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and nine cents. So. With the adding in the contingency and taking away the federal match, that leaves us with the one point. Let's call it a.
The contingency is like over half. The amount of the bid.
It's under half of the bid, but it is a large portion for, for yes, engineering and contingencies.
Is this a good idea, Adam? Is this a good idea, Adam?
If I, if I may.
I'm not being funny. I'm truthfully like.
I think we brought this to you in May of twenty twenty-four and shared kind of the Sophie's choice you had of. Uh, if you, it was at that time, you said one point four million dollars.
Yeah.
To finish this project, uh. And the op, the other option was could we walk away?
Yeah.
Walking away, we would need to reimburse ODOT for the design costs, which at that time were seven hundred thousand dollars. So it was. I think at that time we got direction from you. Can you continue working and go to bid? Now the fact that it has gone to bid, we are obligated to finish this project with ODOT.
And I mean, like the clinics up there would be apoplectic if we didn't.
And you're from, uh, Providence and, uh, and others in the area all the time about the quality of that sidewalk. Currently, the sidewalk is inspected monthly.
Yeah, so I, I think going back to your previous question, uh. Yeah, I do believe the project needs to, to move forward. Uh, we, we do, uh, inspect. The sidewalk currently, uh, we're contracted with W S P to do inspections on the sidewalk and, um. It is getting worse by the day and we are nearing, uh, very close to, uh, closing the sidewalk, uh, in that location.
Thank you.
One of the things that I was wondering, you mentioned there were three different options that were looked at, but it seems to me like. You know, one of the, I heard you say the first option was, uh, concrete retaining wall rather than gravel. And what, what were the other two options?
Uh, there's a, there's a lightweight backfill that they were gonna use and then a gravel backfill. And then the other one is driving piles with a machine. Um, and that was what they determined was the best option. Yep, the soldier pile wall. So, um. So yeah, it is, I don't know if, uh, any of you have had the chance. I'm sure you walked on the sidewalk, but had a chance to look over the, the wall. Uh, it's extremely steep. Um, and the only way is to elevate it and can a lever, uh, the, the sidewalk, uh, to. To have a, a, a safe sidewalk.
So the, and the backfill piece wasn't an option because there's piping underneath?
Yeah, there's a sewer line that runs, uh, in between the Providence building and, uh, the, um, the, there's another, uh. Uh, health building there runs in between the two of them. There's a, um, there's a sewer line that runs down through there. And then there's a, uh. A fairly large storm line that runs down there, uh, through there too.
So I was just curious if we're more committed to the design options or if those are most cost effective.
I don't know, Randy, do you wanna, I know you've been involved with a lot of the.
Please just come to the zoom. Thank you, Randy.
At, at this point, we are very committed to those. Um, it's a complete design. So the way it works is. There's a committee that starts it, they weigh the options and then they proceed on. With the design. So what we have now is the final design ready to go. That's what went to bid. So.
At this point, I think if we wanted to, um, investigate other options, we would need to reimburse ODOT seven hundred and thirty, thirty-five thousand for. Our, for their design cost so far.
And it, and what you're getting at is like, is it gonna, could we do it cheaper? You'd be opening up a can of worms that. Professional engineers have already gone through. I won't speak to either way, but. Maybe, maybe you just spend another seven hundred thousand dollars in design and get something similar.
Uh, you know, I think back to May of twenty-four and we all said this was gonna happen and it did, so I'm not completely shocked. Um. Similar, I mean, I mean, I, we're, we're past the point where, you know. At the, at that time, we had decided, you know, we're not gonna refund almost eight hundred thousand dollars and get nothing out of it. I recall it being something closer to one point two, maybe I was wrong, one point four. It's much more significant again, um. Budget implications that we should be concerned about here would be my one question. Just don't run away. Uh, yeah, there are.
So, um, so this is in the road fund. Uh, this is in the road fund for a million four fifty. Um, of capital expenditure, uh, and it was also offset. There's a, a one point four million dollar assumption for a, a ODOT loan. Um, so where we are at the moment is we are applying for the ODOT loan. Um, however, the, uh, the deposit is required, uh, immediately. Um, so, uh, so the, the one budget implication is that this is gonna go from a million four fifty in project cost to a million eight. Um, there, there will be a supplemental budget process. Uh, it may be a formal budget process that requires. Um, you know, sort of the, the, it may be significant enough to the road fund. Uh, that we may have to reassemble the budget committee, which conveniently enough, we will during the budget process, um, but we will have to do it. Under any circumstances, it will be a supplemental budget. The, uh, what is unclear is, uh, how this is impacted without the ODOT loan. Um, so for the time being, it will, it will be from the general fund. Uh, the million eight, um, it would be a receivable or it will be a loan from the general fund to the road fund. Uh, and the road fund would either repay that through an ODOT loan, um, or we just remain on the, you know, remain as a, as a receivable. Uh, so there are, so there are budget implications. I should also mention, um, that, uh. There has been submitted a request for congressionally directed spending for this project. Um, which presumably would cover these costs. Um, however, that's through ODOT directly. Uh, and so, um, under any circumstances, that million eight would probably stay with ODOT until sometimes the process is complete. And then be returned to us. Uh, what happens during the ODOT loan process is a little less, is a little less clear. Um, Haley and I had a conversation with ODOT today. Um, you know, the request is, is that when we are approved for the loan, that that would. That that would, the million eight would be returned to us. Um, again, it's, it's not clear if that's how the process is gonna work. Um, so, uh, either, either, uh, we would be directly reimbursed as costs are incurred from the ODOT loan. Um, but the million eight would remain on deposit, um, or the ODOT loan would replace the million eight, but I'm not super confident about that.
And remind us, what, what would one point eight million dollars be in, in terms of percentage of the entire road fund?
Oh gosh, I mean, I mean, it's, it is, it is ninety-five percent of, of the capital expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Good sense.
And to. Jump into, speaking of funds, what would? What does one point eight million represent in terms of our current general fund balance?
Uh, well, so the, 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 the current general fund balance is somewhere between five and a half and six million. So that's the, that's the general fund balance. So it's, I mean, it's not, it's a meaningful portion.
During these. Robust and unprecedented times at the federal level. Just seems like. Not like. Paranoid to think. Couple times like. What flow-throughs might endanger those ODOT funds? I mean, we're just. Seems like a little bit more careful than less careful these days.
Yeah, I don't. I can't speak to that. Um, you know, I mean, I think that, the, the thing that was interesting to me was the conversation we had today was with, uh, ODOT runs its own bank. Um, so the, you know, the loan that we're applying for is, is sort of ODOT controlled funds. Um. I know they're gonna have the million eight because we're gonna send it to them. But, uh, but you know, I mean, I, but I have, I. I don't have as much concern with regards to that process as I would as if this was banked by the D Q. Right? You know, and so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm. Yeah, I would say that the risk, the risk that there's sort of impacts to that just from sort of general federal. Uh, issues is, is I'd say significantly less than, than with other sort of sources of funds.
Because sometimes it feels like just giving it a second thought, then we hate ourselves in the morning a little bit less.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Share one more like little, like one more sad reminder will be that throughout this process, ODOT's costs are contained. So this is our best guess. This is ODOT's engineering estimate of how much this should cost. But should there be significant change orders or unexpected difficulties? We will be coming back to you and asking for additional funds.
Thank you. And, and then Grant.
And we don't know what the potential terms of this ODOT loan is, right? In terms of like an interest rate or anything like that?
No, I mean, well, um, it, it is a, it is a bank loan, uh, although it's the bank of ODOT. Uh, so it will go through an underwriting process and at that, at that time they would sort of risk. Risk weight it as far as the, the interest rate. Um, so, so the terms, uh, including how long the loan is, uh, is unclear at this time. So.
Right. Um, just for our own notification, O, O tip, uh. Or, organs. Transit infrastructure bank, OTIP, uh, their, their loan terms are pretty, pretty generous. Uh, the interest rate is relatively low. And when they fund a project, they usually, uh, don't require payment until the project is complete. Uh, interest would accrue during that time, uh, but they wouldn't require usually. Uh, typically they'll require payments to begin until the project is completed. So we pull funds, uh, do the work and then. Repayment would start once the ones project is complete.
Yeah.
That's usually how it works. Um. Don't, don't quote me on it, but. Rate, rates generally are low through OTIP, uh, but the, the bigger question for us is we would be taking on that as a liability.
Yep.
So whether we, uh, account for it as, as debt or what, it's still going to be a liability on our books that we will need to account for long term.
Correct. Yeah, and, 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 uh. We're having a follow-up conversation, uh, with sort of OTIP or the ODOT bank and the, uh. The production side, right? Or to understand sort of how this loan would work after we fund, after we funded this money. So. Um, you know, when we have that conversation, which we're hoping to have this week, but probably. You know, next week, um, obviously we'll, we'll get.
Yeah, yeah, once, once he talks, he'll be able to break more details, like exactly on how ours.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, the, that's disgusting, of course, kind of a point in tilting, um. You, question for Adam and just you may have heard this question before, but you need an answer tonight?
Uh, yeah, what, our, our deadline's Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, um, as, as we may have heard before, or you may have read in the, in the minutes. It's, it's a shame that we have to make this decision last minute. It's a shame that it costs more than it does and it's a shame we're in this position. That's all I gotta say about that.
Reshamed, good.
I'll, I'll pile on the shame, uh. Uh, you know, just, uh, channeling, uh, city key holder and former, uh, councillor Megan Saunders. You know, I would, I would. Hope that ODOT does recognize and as they consider loans and repayments and everything, this is significant amount of life for city, whoever. None of us are happy to make this decision. Uh, costs have increased significantly, um. And I have to, you know, pull my nose and swallow, but it's. That, that's the way that it is.
I was thinking about councillor Saunders on my drive down here tonight.
Remind me what is needed tonight?
Leave this a motion in the package.
Thank you.
Page sixty-eight.
No. I move. I move to authorize the city manager to pay the requested advance deposit in the amount of. One million seven hundred ninety-nine, seven hundred and one dollars and fifty-six cents to ODOT and move to the construction phase of the project.
Moved by David. Uh, any further discussion on the May Street elevated sidewalk? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Vote. Chair votes, I motion passes.
Alright. This one's a little more straightforward. Uh, page ninety-six, uh, of your, uh, packet, you will find the covering and supporting documents for. Uh, the award, uh, construction contract for Columbia Street and wastewater replacement. Uh, this project, um. Uh, most notable is, uh, the removal of the leaded joint water main, um, that's in the street. Uh, this, the section of, I believe there's seven hundred and fifty, uh, feet of. Uh, of work that needs to be done between eighth and tenth, uh, on Columbia. Um. There's a, there's a failing two-inch galvanized water main, um, that is on the, I believe, the south side of the roads. We have. Water line on the north side and on the south side that'll be removed, uh, and replaced. Uh, also the removal and replacement of the deteriorated, uh, sewer main. Um, and the removal of the last remaining section of concrete street. Uh, and the regating, regrading of the cross slope, uh, of that, uh, street and, uh, replacement of new asphalt. Uh, there's partial sidewalk and ADA curb ramps that will be installed. Uh, and then, uh, this, I, 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 one of the biggest things on this project, the section, uh, has had many sewer backups. Uh, resulting in insurance claims and also multiple water main breaks. Um, uh, this project was put out to bid January, uh, twenty-two-five. We received, uh, five contractors submitted bids. Um, the lowest bidder, uh, was Integrity Building and Construction with a bid of one million ninety-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars. Uh, and, uh, happy to see, uh, the folks from I B C here tonight. We have Mike and Sean both here. Um, so, uh, that's all I have. Uh, are there any questions?
Uh, I just wanna say I'm happy that this company taking care of this as well. So that's great. And then. I'm curious for the folks that live in that area. I know who believe that it had issues. I know this is a, an issue, um. Approximately how long is? I'm sorry, I shouldn't ask this question about how long would the disruption be to the people that live on that street or that section? Like one of the construction, just rough.
Trying to remember the dates, um. We've got, we, we, um.
Can you repeat the question?
The starting date is soon, as soon as we get the contract signed.
A non-coalable date is hopefully the disturbances anywhere between sixty to ninety days.
I'd be surprised if it went over ninety.
Can you say that into the mic?
Okay, so the. They're, they're expecting. Between sixty and ninety days. They'll be surprised if it goes more than ninety. We, I'm, I'm, this. Said that the substantial date was October first and that sounds right for final paving. But the substantial date I'm trying to remember was a little sooner than. Yeah. Okay, that sounds right. September fifteenth for the substantial.
If we were to get, yeah, if we were to get questions about, like, about office, like, it's nice to have a very rough idea. Okay, thank you.
My question is simply based out of curiosity, since I've walked that section of street, uh, quite frequently. Why, I've always wondered why that street, that section of street specifically has such a. Like significant cross round and also why it's concrete. Just always wondered what is up with that specific section.
Don't have background as to why, um. Uh, there was a lot more streets like that, um. Not all of them being concrete, but for some reason, that time period, they, they wanted to make that. A crown in the center, even though the road was off and that just made for that. That north side being really steep. So we're now. Going through and removing, but as we're going, we're, we're making it a flat shed across the road now, so.
I believe the concrete went all the way to fifteenth. So we've done that many projects and this is the last two block piece.
And I can say what, what I've heard, but I don't know for sure, is that there was an old road from a fruit plant that went through there and, and. And it tied in with Cascade. There was two, two concrete roads. We ran when we, when we placed Cascade fifteenth to eighteenth, we ran across. A concrete road about six feet under the current road, so. It's always a little bit mysterious, but.
Cool. I love that stuff. Thank you. Highlight of the meeting so far.
Uh, other questions? You have a motion?
I believe that we authorize the award of the construction contract. We've taken these building new construction, I'll see for one million ninety-six dollar, one million ninety-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars. And approve an additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars in contingency funding for total project cost of one million, two hundred, six thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Moved by Cavallari.
I'll second.
Second by Amanda. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thanks everybody. Thanks for your good work, guys. Uh, we're skipping the ordinance, city manager comments.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just have a couple of quick, uh, pieces for you, but I do wanna start with a clarifying question about fireworks. And that is, um, I heard that you want to ban sales, um, but I. Wanted to make sure that you still wanna keep use on New Year's Eve. Right? So it was a total ban of sales because the state only allows for sales at the, uh, those two weeks. Um, but you still wanna keep to allow the use on New Year's Eve. Is that correct?
That's what I want.
Did I have a little understanding of that? Super, thanks.
Everybody okay with? Abigail's about to prepare for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, other comments, Abigail?
Yep, just a couple more. Um, first, uh, passing around is a sign-up sheet for First Fridays. Uh, so these are done by Visit Hood River and the city has, uh, for the last couple of years had a table. We were, uh, it's a chance for you to get to meet residents and constituents and people to meet you in a more informal setting. This year they'll be holding one in June, uh, August and September. They're going to skip July because, uh, this year it falls on July fourth. So they've decided not to hold it on holiday as well as last year they had to cancel for the heat. So, um. If you are able to sign up and attend some of those, that would be awesome. If not, no worries, but, uh, try to get a sense of if we've got folks, um, available.
I will just comment that, uh, someone has signed up for everyone and, uh, there is, there is, uh, we can sign up. There can be more. It's not like there's no space left, even though Anna is coming every week.
I would also say, uh, that you probably wanna take shifts because I think it's probably from five PM to nine PM. A little bit of, um, staff will take care of setup and take down, but that is a long time to hang out. So if you wanna take the first half or a second half. Um, I will be there. Some other staff will also be there, but we'd love to, to see you there. They're super fun. I know almost all of you have done those before and we have a really good time.
Thank you.
Um, then my other comments, just two, uh, pieces. First, I wanna thank councillor Paulson, who, um, was supposed to be on the radio. And then I think, uh, things fell apart, not on his, his end, but with, uh, Radio Tierra. So apologies, but thank you for your willingness to do that. And the next one will be scheduled for next month. And then if you have not yet watched on YouTube, councillor Cavalier is was the video recap of the month for month of February and did a great job. So thank you for that. And I think you've all signed up for those coming up, so appreciate that. Uh, and then finally, I wanna take a minute turn to the city attorney. He's asked to share some information with you about short-term rentals.
In the public session?
In the public session. Yes, I triple-checked that with him.
I quadruple-checked. Go ahead, Dan.
Hi, uh, good evening. Um, we have, um, before us tonight, we're gonna discuss in exec session, a settlement agreement. That was, um, offered by the plaintiffs in this case. Um, but, um, I wanted to give you kind of an update about the program and the, um, where our program. Our program seems to be headed in the federal courts around the country, just kind of an update. It's not really something that's, um, appropriate for a closed session. So I thought I would share with you during this open session. If you recall, our current STR regulations were adopted in two thousand and sixteen. And, uh, the, there are a couple of operational limitations that were placed on STRs at that time. We're focused on the residential zone, remember. Uh, commercial zones don't have all these restrictions. But the big restrictions that mattered were, uh, minimum number of parking spaces, certain, uh, fire life safety requirements. And that there be, um, a long-term, that the owner be a long-term resident of the city. Um, we've since amended that last requirement to be the long-term residency requirement can be met by someone other than the owner. Others, other cities have called it the host, the onsite host, or, um, supervisor, something like that. So that's how we've amended it. And, um, the, uh, what's kind of emerged in, in federal courts, there haven't been too many federal courts around the country that have, trial courts have addressed the commerce clause challenge to these kind of restrictions. But the number is growing. And there appear to be kind of two models out there. Uh, one, uh, which started in the city of New Orleans that required the, uh, long-term tenant to be the owner. And there the district court and the court of appeals, uh, invalidated that under a commerce clause challenge. Because it was the owner. You couldn't make the, it was discriminatory. Um, the Ninth Circuit addressed Santa Monica's model. Uh, because the residency requirement can be met by what we'll call the host or the onsite supervisor. It's been called by a lot of these courts, the adult supervision requirement. So that someone has to be there and it kind of comports with our, um, hosted home share type model under our ordinance. So anyhow, uh, since the Fifth Circuit rejected New Orleans. New Orleans went back and amended theirs to, uh, be patterned after the Santa Monica model. And since then, uh, four trial courts have addressed both of these, uh, dealing with the original uh, Fifth Circuit case and the Ninth Circuit case. And all of them have upheld the ordinance based on the Ninth Circuit model, which is the onsite adult supervisor. That's our ordinance. So the, there are four district courts that have dealt with it and four of them have upheld the model that, that we have here. They are the, um, Eastern District for Louisiana. The District for Colorado, the Western District of Arkansas and the Western District of Missouri. Uh, we haven't gotten an appellate, federal appellate decision on any of those, but there's one pending out of New Orleans. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, since, uh, the, we adopted in two thousand and sixteen. The, uh, long-term, the onsite residency requirement had a seven-year, uh, phase in. And that ended in October of twenty twenty-three. So, uh, as I understand it, there originally had a hundred and twenty-two STRs that, uh, were, that rode out that, that period, uh, at least to a certain extent. Forty-seven of them remained the full seven years. So seventy-five of the, uh, STRs that didn't have, uh, a long-term resident. They complied within that seven-year period. Forty-seven of them stuck it out for the full forty, uh, for the full, uh, seven-year period. And, um, since two thousand and sixteen, all the residential STRs, new licenses have complied with the residency requirements. And, um, it's, uh, and what we've been able to figure, I think Dustin has tracked down some of these statistics. Um, it appears that your two policy objectives are being achieved in terms of converting these short-term rentals to long-term tenancies. And because, uh, it appears that sixty percent of these, uh, sixty percent of the forty-seven are now advertised as long-term rentals. Also, uh, the number of nuisance complaints has gone down significantly. So, um, I don't have a good feel for the nuisance situation in Hood River. But the two policy objectives that were driving these regulations appear to, uh, appear that they're being achieved. So we can, we can talk about the details of the settlement agreement in executive session, but just wanted to let you know that the ordinance that we have in place is, appears to be, uh, surviving commerce clause challenges where federal trial courts have addressed it.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions? Mindful of the fact that we are gonna be in exec in a little while on that? Anything else on that? Abigail, back to you? Thank you. Uh, committee reports? Amanda, anything to report from a committee?
I did go to my first energy council meeting last week. Um, as far as reporting back, most of it was completely over my head and I have a lot of catching up and learning to do on that committee.
That's a fine report.
They general, I think, I guess what we talked about the most was funding and, um, uh, just finding places to get money. And they need to work on a new work plan this year, so that will be in the works. Um, but the uncertainty of federal funding in this present time and maybe trying to, uh, look on or focus on kind of more local uh, fundraising efforts for projects. Um, and I guess there was a big project in Cascade Lock City that they are not doing because the, the building was not structurally sound, so that kind of went out the window, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I met with Chrissy, the chair of the parks, and, uh, Parks Board is excited to be working with us on whatever we want to work with them about. Um, so they're excited to have, break down some barriers between our silos. That's it.
Uh, Taste of Saruda, uh, Benefit and Dinner Auction is coming up on Sunday, March sixteenth. So, Sunday, six PM to eight PM at the Mountain Hood Winery. Um, it's basically a dinner and an auction to support the ongoing cultural exchange between Hood River and Saruda, which is nearing fifty years. Uh, you can email hoodriver sistercity@gmail.com or, uh, contact myself or, or, uh, councillor Rivera, uh, to purchase tickets. They're forty dollars per person or five hundred for a table. Dinner will include sushi, chicken, vegetable lo mein, dumpling, rice, cookies, that sort of thing. And there's silent live auction items, including local tastings, artwork, dinners and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, last chance, or at least my last public pulpit to, uh, to ask to, to buy tickets for this. Uh, you know, I think it's an incredible thing. Uh, we've got nineteen delegates coming. They're arriving on, uh, Thursday. It's Thursday, uh, and will remain till Tuesday. Um, and, uh, yeah, I know the, the city of Saruda is, is very, very much, uh, ver- very excited to send people from Saruda to Hood River, uh, likewise. And, um, anybody that's, uh, that's interested in supporting that cause, please make sure to do this. This is one of the best ways to raise money for that program, uh, which we will send, you know, middle-aged, uh, middle, not middle-aged, middle school-aged, middle school-aged children, um, to, to Saruda. Uh, in exchange next time, yeah. And maybe some middle-aged people too. There's some chaperones, you know, so that's it for me.
Is there any meet and greet opportunity for council or mayor or something with that delegation?
Uh, the delegation will arrive, uh, I believe go to the high school, uh, on Thursday. On Friday, there is a, uh, a dinner that they're having at the Saddle Club for those people that are involved. So that's another opportunity to stop by, say hi. Um, they've got activities throughout the weekend. On Saturday, they, they'll be going to, um, uh, like a free day with, with their host families. Sunday, they're, they're planting a tree. Uh, at Man Park, visiting the cemetery in the, in the early morning. And then headed to, uh, see a Timbers game, then coming back to go to the, the Mountain Hood Winery. So a lot of stuff going on between now and then. Best time is the Taste of Saruda, uh, to see anybody.
Thank you.
Nothing for me, although for their sake, I hope the Timbers play better this game than they did last game.
Anna?
Nothing for me.
Uh, we have a landmarks review board appointment, Dustin.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, you have two vacant positions for your landmarks review board. This board is advisory and appointed by this body, uh, to help advise on, uh, the management of your downtown district and historically listed structures, uh, historic structures and historic areas. Uh, you maintain an open advertising, required participants, uh, are required to live, not within the city, but can be within the county. Uh, you have two vacancies up and coming, uh, based upon the retirements of two long-serving members. And we have finally received two applicants. So, uh, within your packets, there, there's a request from two individuals, one Colin Nelson, Colin is the owner of Shufflin Plumbing. Uh, he is a second-generation home, uh, rehab specialist. Um, it's in their family background. That's their area of expertise is trade work and, uh, structural rehab. And then, uh, second request for rec, uh, appointment is Chris Donamire. Chris works with Forest Service, here, lives here within the city. Uh, he is the heritage, um, program manager. Essentially the cultural resource and historic manager for the Forest Service. They work on buildings, uh, such as Multnomah Falls, structural rehabs for that particularly listed and important structure. Uh, how to maintain and/or modernize those facilities to keep them up to speed. Chris is also, uh, the point person for, um, development proposals within the gorge scenic area. Uh, especially for cultural resource protections, um, native, uh, homestead sites, uh, graves, burials. All, uh, places of significance all fall within his purview and expertise. So two uniquely qualified individuals. Um, that I've been able to interview, discuss that with councillor Stapina. We have a recommendation to appoint both to serve, uh, on your landmarks review board.
I believe this is a motion or is it the mayor's appointment?
I moved to appoint Colin Nelson and Christopher Donamire to serve on the landmarks review board.
By Grant. Second. Second by Ben. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you. Uh, I had a really positive, uh, result of my equity advisory council. One of the longtime members called to let me know that the sheriff and the police chief were gonna be at a outreach event at Mid Valley Elementary on March thirty-first, and it'd be great if I went and I hadn't known about it, was glad to know about it, will be going. Like, that was like how the system's supposed to work, so was pleased about that. And, uh, just for the good of the order, my daughter got engaged last weekend in Washington DC. Woo-hoo.
Mayor, can I add one thing to your mayor comments?
Please.
Uh, um, March twenty-eighth will be Min Yasui Day, uh, in the state of Oregon. And, uh, with council permission, I've talked to almost all of you about this, but just looking for a thumbs up to bring that, uh, proclamation to you next, at the next meeting. Super. And it, as the mayor and I have discussed, we don't have a really formal process for how to bring proclamations. So not next time, but at a future meeting, I will bring, uh, a conversation and a recommendation about how to handle proclamations going forward.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Super. Thank you.
Uh, council comments, Anna.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
Uh, one thing that I had, I had, uh, through the process of the appointment of the landmarks review board members is, you know, we haven't heard a ton out of the landmarks review board. Um, in, in terms of, if we need them for something, they will give a report. But I'm just wondering what council thinks about maybe them coming here and sort of presenting their current issues, blocks, what they think's going well, that sort of thing. I think that's good for boards in general, but just, uh, you know, I, I had a conversation with one of the board members, Arthur Babbitts, about that. And just kind of wanna make sure we're on the same page and make sure they feel supported and everything. So just wanted to kind of get everybody's opinion on that. What do you think? Like, maybe having that as an agenda item as, as we have, uh, room for it in the not-too-distant future.
Head nods, thumbs?
Yep.
Got head nods.
Cool.
We'll get that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Uh, that's it for me.
Uh, I've been invited to the Thrive Board meeting tomorrow, so I'll go to that. And then I'm going to the City Thread group thing, uh, focus group on Wednesday. I think that's it, uh, regarding city things. And then we got the thing next week.
Thank you. Amanda?
I don't know much, but it sounds like we have two great, greatly qualified people on the landmark review committee, so I'm really excited about that. And I am very curious about what they do and what they work on. Um, so I think that's a great idea to have them report at least every once in a while, see what's happening. So, thanks.
We'll now have our executive session. I'm gonna read the script. City council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two dot six sixty-one H. To consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last twenty-five minutes. At the end of executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now disconnect.